Let's go ahead and get started. Are we recording or streaming or whatever we need to be doing? I'm going to assume the answer is yes. Great, thank you. Okay, welcome. Does anybody have more than just like a little bit of sort of white stuff outside? Is anybody getting dumped on yet?
We have a massive freezing rainstorm happening up here on Mount Tabor.
Oh, I'm right by Laurelhurst. I think it's just a dusting presently.
We're sort of going in and out of like some sleety snow versus rain, so we'll see. We'll see how this turns out. A good freezing rainstorm followed by 40 mile per hour winds is often a recipe for success, right?
Excellent driving conditions.
Yeah, trees coming down, power lines. I told the kids to charge all their devices because you never know when the power is going to go out. And God forbid we lose our cell phones.
Speaking of which, I'll be right back.
I was gonna say.
God forbid you have to play a board game and candlelight or something.
I know. My kids wouldn't even know. Like, they'd be like, what's going on? We're just gonna go to bed, never mind. All right, well, let's go ahead and dive in. So on today's Intergovernmental Committee Agenda, we are going to get a legislative update. We'll have a discussion around some bills that are relevant to the district and things that people are interested in. A conversation which may be short about school reopening and any intergovernmental issues around that that the committee or board can help with. And then, under our other items, a conversation about the municipal broadband PDX proposal in Monmouth County and whether the district wants to support it. Any other, any board members have anything else they want to add? Committee members want to add to that agenda? And our student reps, anything you all would like to add to the agenda?
Um, no, nothing, other than I like your background, Julia, and I'm excited for the reopening update.
Thanks.
Great. So we'll start off with public comments. Kara, has anybody signed up for public comment?
No.
All right, then we will dispense with that and move on. Courtney, I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. Yeah, this is such a weird session doing this all remotely. And I know Julia is experiencing this as well, but it's my opinion is it's like, it should be slow because there's such a limited amount of conversations we can have. We can't have hallway conversations like if we were in the Capitol right now. So you have to schedule every meeting. And, you know, it's hard to get time with members, so it's just been really interesting. But it's also, it's also really nice to watch committees, you know, in your, like, office, your home office, not have to drive to Salem. So it's, we're all getting adjusted to this new reality, or at least the temporary reality. They're going to be doing it remotely, at least until through April, is what I'm hearing. And they'll be reassessing, you know, as metrics change. And, you know, they have been changing, but there's a lot of unknowns. And we're not, again, we're not public health experts, so we're just, you know, following the guidance of the legislature. I've been sending updates every week on Friday. They're not, you know, the most sexy updates right now because it's early in session and they're getting through a lot of bills. A lot of times, in the legislature, in the legislature, they have courtesy hearings, so they'll hear a bill but not intending to move it. So a lot of that is happening. It's just sort of a slow process in terms of getting things through. And then, they are meeting on Thursdays in person to have floor session, but today's was canceled because of the impending weather. So we'll see, you know, I don't know that that's going to slow them down a ton since there's not a lot being kicked out of committee just yet, but anyway, I just wanted to share that sort of brief overview. The, there's a lot of bills, a lot of education bills, like any session. We're tracking those. I have Kathy from Eames Consulting on here with me as well, just in case there are questions that maybe she's closer to than I am. There's a lot of committees we're watching and a lot of bills that are not always in the usual committees, so we're following some of those. I just got finished listening to a hearing around a bill that would address some technical issues with Senate Bill 155 that was the sexual misconduct bill. And it was pretty lackluster, but it was interesting because it was in a committee I didn't expect it to be in. It usually goes to the education committees. So there's some of that dynamic going on as well. What else can I tell you about the session? There's, there are quite a few bills that are coming out of the BIPOC Committee, or the BIPOC, what are we calling it? The, Kathy, help me out. I spent a long week. Caucus, thank you. Oh, my gosh. And so we were looking at some of those bills, which a lot of, you know, a lot of the times, a lot of times, we, because we're the largest district, bills get offered up that ask districts to do things that sometimes we're already doing. So that's another, you know, kind of fun thing to look at and consider and compare, and that's frequent. I think we'll see some more of, some things that we're doing well and that we can talk to members about whether, you know, what's our success story or what's a challenge in PPS when it comes to that, to a particular topic. I, oh, and I'm gonna, sorry, I just, I was texting Don Wolf in case he has time to join on the municipal broadband. So maybe Roseanne, could you send an invite to him?
Yes.
Thank you. That way I can keep talking or shut up and let you guys ask questions. And then I have some specific bills I wanted to raise with you that have come up, questions about support, whether you want to or not. I shared with you the legislative agenda, just as a reference. I know we're not, we haven't all memorized it. I mean, I mostly have, but you might not have. So I wanted you to have that in front of you in case you have questions about how anything squares up with that. So let me know if you didn't get it, but I think you all should have it. It's also on the website.
Courtney, before we go into specific bills, can you give me, and this is just a newbie question, because this is my first legislative session going through as a board member, can you, can you give me the run of show around when the state passes its budget around schools and how that filters back into districts? And maybe how it's supposed to work and how it actually does work?
The legislative process or how everything comes down later on?
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm thinking in terms of, I mean, budget, budget generally gets done late, but I know, you know, I know, I'm pretty familiar with the legislative budget process, but I'm just, how that interacts with our budget process in a year of legislatures in session? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I wish Claire was here because she can always speak to this so much better than I can, but it's tricky because we have to build our budget while this is, it's like, you know, while the plane's flying, you're building it. And it has always felt that a little bit like that. Our timeline, you know, we don't have to approve anything until June, basically. But there's lots of community engagement and, you know, the, I don't want to call it rigmarole because that sounds like it's not a very important process, but, you know, there's a lot of, there's a, there's a process, a standard process that we go through as a district to develop our budget. And it is happening simultaneously as the session, the long session, well, every session, but this year, long session. And you're right, we don't really settle on these large budgets until May, usually. And so it's a bit tricky. And I don't, I don't know that I have a good answer. I think we, we have a general sense of what the governor's proposed budget is a good, you know, what's the word, framework to start with. So we build it based on that, and then we adjust as we learn more and as committees have conversations. And I think the, the co-chair's budget, I'm not sure on the timing, actually, Kathy, do you have the timing down on that? Sorry, it's usually, I think it's about now, usually.
It's usually early in this year. The rumors have been that it will be, if there's, it will take quite a bit longer. We asked Representative Nose, who's not one of the tri-chairs, of course, but one of the subcommittee chairs. And his estimate, someone said May, and he said, I think we'll have it before that, but he didn't seem entirely confident. So more mid-session than usual, I think, this year.
Generally speaking, is my assumption correct that what happens, if you're sort of operating off of the governor's, you know, proposed budget or the co-chair budget, what might happen late is an add, or are there, you know, because again, I'm assuming those are somewhat conservative, right? And that sometimes it's sort of a question of maybe adding, or are there years when actually the final education funding comes in lower than either one of those? Again, I'm just, I'm thinking of how this relates to our process, right? And are we sort of building off of what we assume is going to be the floor? And then, you know, look, if they add, you know, $100 million or more, then it's something we can add things back, which creates its own set of problems, right? Because in some ways, you might be still talking about staff reductions that you don't have to make, which is disruptive, but.
I think it's both, Director Scott. I think we, we obviously see what the governor, for the state school fund, for example, it's 9.1 is what the governor proposed. We know, based on conversations with school business officers like Claire and others from OASBO, that that's not enough to keep us, that's not current service level, that's actually a dip. So what would we need to get to current service level? Well, we think that's about 9.4. So we build it based on both, is my assumption or my understanding, and then we kind of reconcile it as we go. But, but we can get more information. I'm happy to get more information for you.
You don't need to do any project on it. It was just more of sort of a general question. I'll turn to the, no, and I knew it was, and I knew it was problematic. I'll, I'll, I'll look to the veterans on the board for guidance as we go through that. Do we want to dive into some, any specific questions that committee members have? Or Courtney, I know you're tracking some specific bills as well.
Yeah, we're tracking a lot, and I'm actually happy to share the current list of tracked bills. There's a lot of stuff in there. You probably aren't going to have that much of a, I mean, I don't want to make assumptions. Maybe you will have a lot of interest in, but there are a lot that probably won't. But I'll, but I'll share that. I'll send that out. I think a couple of things have come up around, so for example, the last, in 2019, there was a bill that would remove the non-medical exemption for vaccinations. Rita, Director Moore is probably familiar with that. She was on the board at that time, Director Brim Edwards was as well. I, we got a request from the folks who are running the coalition to support that bill, to see if we would support it. I am a little concerned about weighing in on public health matters as a school board. And so I wanted to bring that to you because I told them I would, and I wanted you all to make that decision and kind of guide me. And it doesn't fall squarely in our legislative agenda. So I wanted to raise it with you to see what you thought. It's a obviously contentious issue, especially right now. And it's, it could, it would also be fine to be neutral, which would be my staff recommendation.
Can I ask for a clarification? Does, does that mean it would take away the religious exemption as well?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
But that, it was the broadening beyond religious that was.
It's the philosophical exemption that is, in my mind, deeply problematic.
So I would be, before I have a point of view, I would be, because just because something's going to be contentious doesn't mean we shouldn't weigh in.
I agree.
I would want to know, get some data from our district about, you know, whether, you know, the prevalence. And I know from like some of the charter school hearings when that was, and I'm not sure why it was with the charter schools that was raised, but that they had high unvaccinated rates. And then, so just like what, what the rates are, where, like, whether we saw a big change when the exemption got broadened. And then I'd like to hear from some public health experts of, like, what is the benefit or detriment to the general student population by, you know, by the change in the data because of the change in the exemption? That, that's what I'd want before I'd say, like, we should take a position one way or the other.
So it's been, it's been a few years since I looked, but the last time I looked, we had some schools with what I would consider to be extraordinarily high levels, rates of kids not vaccinated. And it seems, I mean, the pattern that I saw then seemed to be kind of based on socioeconomic status primarily. So to my mind, it is a public health issue and an issue in the schools. And I am inclined to, I'm inclined to think that it is within our scope of responsibility as an educational institution.
It's funny because my recollection of looking at the data was, it was more of a, the trends were more not socioeconomic, but more kind of where they might have fallen on the spectrum of the, you know, sort of like same thing with fluoride, sort of like, we don't want to be putting things in our kids' bodies versus a any sort of socioeconomic, but if anything skewed to a higher.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that's, I assumed, I assumed that's what you meant, yeah.
Oh, that's not what I meant. That's not what I thought you, okay.
Higher, wealthier school populations tend to have higher rates of unvaccinated kids. And in some schools, it's, it's pretty alarming, actually.
Okay, now we're, we're in sync.
I'm at the beginning of this conversation, but it's off the charts with our charter schools.
Yeah, Amy, that's what I was saying. My recollection is, for some reason, the data from the past when we had extensions was there were like super high rates of non-vaccinated students.
So I'm happy to get that data for you.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, I think I agree with both of the comments so far. I think, I think, I think Rita's right. This is something in our purview that we should feel comfortable weighing in on. And I like, I like Julia's approach of, you know, as with everything, we're not public health, well, Dr. Moore is a public health expert, the rest of us are not. And.
I'm not. I just play one on TV.
I think it is, I think, I think it would be good to do a little bit of consultation, but I am 99% sure that the people who do science will say this is a really important issue. And I think we do need to be prepared, you know, potentially to weigh in. Courtney, could you talk a little bit, I mean, to the downsides? Is it just, because, you know, you say it's contentious, and I agree, although my sense is that it's contentious among a very small number of people.
Yeah, I think, I don't disagree with any of what you're saying, everybody. I have strong opinions about what I think about this bill personally. And I think, and I'll just tell you, I'm pro-vaccine. So I think we should, I think we should pass this bill. However, I'm just trying to play the politics of it a little bit, and I want you to just know that this is something that you're going to hear from people about whether you do it or not. And you're going to hear from more people probably if you do it, and that's on either side. And I just want you to know that that's, that's something that's going to come up. So it's up to you, and I agree that, you know, the student health and wellness is important, and it's something that we value in PPS. And so if that's the track you want to go down, that's fine. It's up to you.
You know, in addition to the public health questions, Director Brim Edwards raised, I would be, you said it would take away the religious exemption. And I guess that surprises me, that that seems like it would fly in the face of both the state and federal constitutions. So I would also be curious just about a legal read, which I assume the legislature has done. Because I think that would be, I'm less likely to support something that people think on its face is unconstitutional, even if it has a good policy.
Yeah, that's, that's good. And I actually want to ask Kathy if she has heard any, is this the exact same bill language? And the reason I'm asking Kathy is because she has other clients that are very much in this realm on the healthcare side of things. So I'm just using her expertise on this bill over, over time. Is this the same language as last time?
So I'm looking right now, and I haven't been able to fully take the time to compare the two because I'll say that this bill, unlike in previous sessions where vaccines, climate change, some of the gun issues have really been, from the beginning of session, a focal point for everyone around which other policies have shaped. That has not yet been the case here. People are not talking about this issue on a large scale yet. But I, I do know that in the past, the concept which included an elimination of all but medical exemptions, so philosophical and religious excluded, was, you know, I think, a very robustly processed policy that Senator Senator Hayward worked on. And the, I think some of the justification around getting out of the religious exemption, which there were even some moderate Democrats who struggled with the elimination of a religious exemption, but the justification coming from Senator Hayward and probably else, I don't know that I saw an LC opinion. I'd have to go back to 2019 and 2020 to look to see if there was on that issue. But it was a lot about being, having the option to do public online education, so that if the option is still there. And then, of course, you heard from the people who were opposed to removing these exemptions about separate but equal, right? So there was an ongoing dialogue that was never fully resolved, of course, because these didn't ever really move fully through the process. But I'll dig and find and see if we can get an LC around that.
Thanks. Parker?
Sure. Courtney, could you, do you have the number for this bill? Because I have not read it, but it sounds like it'd be something that, you know, full disclosure, I don't have a vote, but even ideologically supporting, it'd be something that I'd have to look into more if it was talking about all exemptions.
It's Senate Bill 254. And Parker and Kay and anyone else who wants to have a lesson in OLIS, I'm happy to find time to walk you through how that works. It's a nice tool, and especially as a student, it's a great way to track things of interest. Sorry, I haven't offered that before, but I'm happy to.
Sure. Okay, I've got the number, Senate Bill 254?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Courtney.
And, and I'm old enough that I would be happy to offer some personal testimonials about life before vaccinations and what it was like before the polio vaccination.
You sound like you're a specimen from the past.
I mean, there is a, I mean, I'm not ancient, but I am old enough that I vividly remember polio. I have, I had friends who suffered from polio. I remember, I vividly remember this, and I was little. But I think, I think what we're seeing now is, is an artifact of the success of vaccines.
I think you're right, because.
And what happens when you don't have one.
Yeah, like, not only polio, but measles as the same thread. Like, my mom was like, yeah, people used to have, marked on the outside of their house that you couldn't go to their house because they had measles, and it's just a whole, whole world.
Measles, mumps, German measles. Horror stories about German measles, which nobody even thinks about anymore. So, yes, I would be happy to offer those, and I will have rants queued up on demand if this comes before us.
We will build, we will build that into future agendas.
And I'd like to be clear, I am pro-vaccination. My further inquiry was not so much about the effectiveness of vaccines. But Director Moore, I certainly enjoy discourse with you and further discussion.
I enjoy a good rant, so I'm open for it anytime.
You could be on the other end of the spectrum with what it's like being a student with most people vaccinated. Because it is, it's very different.
Certainly, I, there's, you know, a lot has changed. I'm a history nerd. You know, personally, looking into it, it's, yeah, vaccines are really a gift to humanity in what they've achieved and how far we've come.
Hey, Courtney, what's, what's next?
Yeah, so the other one I wanted to, or there's a couple more. House Bill 2001, which I know, Director Scott, you, you mentioned in an email at one point to me, but it's also been pretty actively, active conversation lately. And this is a Stand for Children bill that Speaker Kotek is carrying. You'll notice the number 2001, that's usually a high priority number for a bill. And this bill is around protecting, basically protecting investments in our Grow Your Own programs, diversity, educator diversity programs, trainings, et cetera, by throwing into statute some rules around how you lay off teachers, basically. So if you're traditionally, or at least, you know, one of the things we hear about a lot is last in, first out. So this is a way, this is a bill that would retain teachers of color, for example, because often they are the last in the system. And so they are running this bill, and there's a hearing next week. We've had conversations just sort of operationally around what this looks like in an, from an HR perspective. The, our partners at OSBA and COSA and OEA, of course, are also looking at this bill. And I think, I think we should support it. We're talking a lot with TOEIC at Stand to just answer questions about how our experience is as a district with this issue and how we can strengthen or make the bill work, you know, work better for districts. So yeah, that's what I got. And I should also say that, just real quick, and I'm sorry to cut, I don't know who, what that was, I don't mean to cut you off. Our legislative agenda includes specific mention of the importance of educator diversity and making sure that our educators are reflecting our student population. And so this would be, you know, in that spirit, supportive of that item on the agenda.
I, for one, would like to see us actively advocate for this bill.
Do you know, is the, I mean, is the bill specific in terms of what it would replace existing CBA language with? I guess I'm also, and maybe this is more of a legal question, I'm just sort of curious. If the legislature passes this, does it supersede collective bargaining agreements? Or does it require collective bargaining agreements to be renegotiated?
The latter is my understanding, but Kathy, I don't know.
If it would be helpful, yeah, I was just looking at it. What it actually does is redefine some of the terminology used. So it redefines what merit is in these conversations to include teachers who have a history of having served students, who have student population with 25% or more, what they consider diverse.
Or speaking the language in a DLI classroom, for example, being fluent in a language or have a competency in a language, as another example. So there's some, there's, there's language specifically, just because you are a new black teacher, there's some other things that have to be, that have to be present in order for this to kind of kick in. So you have to, if you participated in a Grow Your Own program, for example, that would be something that's a consideration. Or the language fluency, or the percentage of poverty at your school, for example. Those are sort of the big three, I think, Kathy, is that, those are the three?
That's right, yeah, and some trainings as well, I think you mentioned that. But it says, "A school district shall retain a teacher with less seniority than a teacher being released under this section if the teacher being retained has more merit." So, and then you cite the definition of merit now, including some of these pieces with a history of certain diverse students.
Are there other examples of laws passed, you know, in the last 10 years that sort of direct school districts to do something with their collective bargaining agreements? I appreciate that explanation, Kathy. I'm still a little confused, though, as to whether it is actually superseding the CBAs or whether it's just, I mean, you know, redefining merit, then sort of it gets applied in individual collective bargaining. I have to imagine the unions are going to argue that no matter what the state legislature passes, it then has to come back for bargaining. But whether that's the case or not, I think is kind of, it's interesting.
I think it's a, it's a really good question. You know, the other issue that comes up around, well, it's come up, I've had questions about it, is the class size bill that would require class size to be a mandatory subject of bargaining. That is an example of a bill that has really, they've really struggled to pass, and I'm happy that they haven't passed it. It's really problematic. That bill has been around for maybe six or six sessions. And it's, and the argument from, from districts has been, let us do our bargaining at the local level. Don't require, don't mandate us to have a certain thing in our contract. So I want to look more closely at this language. I don't think this does the same thing, but I don't know for sure. And it's, and the language is going to change because I know they're already working on amendments. And so I don't want to tell you yes or no until I've really looked at what the next round says. Because it's, I think there's, I think they've been working with Legislative Council this week to get that, to improve the language.
Okay, yeah, great. Well, let's, let's, let's keep us updated on that. I would agree with Director Constan. I think this is something that is a really positive, has a positive potential, so.
And I think, Director Scott, sorry, the other thing, I just think, what we, so often, we are trying to make a bill better so that it works for us, because the underlying, you know, value is there. And I think this is an example of that, where we want to be helpful and we want to make it work. But we also want to be really communicative and vocal when something isn't going to work and not let it happen to us. So I just want you to know that we're working through that as well. Another bill that's come up, just this last week, it's Representative. Um, another bill that's come up, um, just this last week, it's Representative Bynum's bill. There's a list of forever crimes out there, you're probably, some of you are probably familiar with. These are the crimes where you've committed one of these crimes on this list and you, it's very difficult to get hired. And so there's a bill that's come out of the MESD Board, it was their kind of brainchild with the help of Representative Bynum, to remove some nonviolent crimes from the forever crime list to allow districts to hire some of these folks that have maybe a blip on their radar. It does not require us to hire them, that's a key point. Um, but it would allow us to. And so the, and I can send around the list and I'm working, I'm also, I've talked to Sharon about, about this as well and I'm going to talk to Molly, I mean. But these are nonviolent drug crimes primarily. And, uh, and I think this is a way that we could bring in some folks to be, you know, in our system who maybe made a mistake when they were young and have been rehabilitated. And, um, yeah, so it's, it's tricky, TSTC doesn't love it. You know, there are definitely, there's definitely opposition, but we're watching it and I think want to be, you know, get some guidance from you guys on whether we should be, you know, vocal on it or sit back.
So I'd want to, I'd want to know what the, the forever list is. Because it seems odd to have a forever list that was like for inconsequential things. So I think it would be good just to know exactly what, what that is. And then the other thing, do you say it's just for teachers? Or it's all school staff or all district staff?
Sorry, I muted myself.
It may make a difference, it would make pardon for school staff? Yeah.
Well, no, because Courtney, I know that you can have some positions now.
Yes.
Um, if you have these same offenses. But you can't get certification as a teacher or like a school counselor in the public.
Sorry, you're right, you're right, and that's why TSTC has a headache about it, sorry, yeah.
So I'd just like to know kind of like who would apply to what they, what they are. You know, a little bit of the rationale is like, is this the old war on drugs days that they got on a forever list? Or is it actually more complicated than that? And there's a reason why, like, there's a reason why they're on the forever.
Yeah, I'll share the list. There were some items that I wasn't sure if we were going to have time to go deep on here, so I didn't share that list ahead of time and I apologize for that.
I, I think that this falls squarely under our diversity in hiring goal within this legislative session because the, it obviously just hugely disproportionately affects people of color. And just to give you guys a little, I have a personal, I have a strong personal feeling about this because I was in a leadership position with an alternative school before as a chair of the board and really the most, probably the most inspirational educator I've ever known. Who is a, a black man who had an offense when he was in high school that prohibits him from getting certified to teach in the public school system is, is really probably the most inspirational and effective educator I've ever seen work with kids. So that's what they're trying to get at here.
As I say, I, I mean, I think there's, this session, there's a number of things that are happening that may address that. And again, I just want to see what the list was before I was, because somebody labeled them forever at a certain point. But there are some other, interesting, working with Courtney's sister. Some, there's, there are some other work underway on expungement that I would also, I'd be interested, that's focused on a lot of the drug, like nonviolent drug crimes that like to help people get them expunged from their record. And would that actually take a fair number of those off the books? Or is there another, is there another wrinkle anyway, like how they interact with that?
Because Yeah, that's a good question, Director Bren Medwards. And it came up in the work group I was, I sat in on with Representative Bynum and some others on whatever day it was. It feels like that was last week, but it was, I think, Tuesday. And the, the question about expungement, expungement did come up, but that bill did not, I'm aware of it from my sister's world. But, um, but I'd like to look at how those two interface because, you know, the issue of expungement, sometimes there's a barrier, right? And I know you're working on that, I mean, it's expensive, first of all. So there's a lot of things, but I think that's a good reminder that we should maybe compare, see how the two interface.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is also because Senator Brzezinski, the Chair of the Judiciary Committee is going to be, is the, was the one who asked to have it drafted. So he's definitely invested in moving the bill. And it just covers a lot of the, I think, offenses that would fit in the category that most people are like, yeah, you should be able to move on from those once you've sort of paid, done your restitution and, you know, whatever your sentence was. So it'd be interesting to see whether that actually could move a number of people also through that. Not, not, and that's not in opposition to this other bill, but it's just like, it'd be interesting to see the interplay.
Yeah, that's a good, a good suggestion and I will reach out to Stacy at MESD and, and I think, is it Ty in Bynum's office? Yeah.
All right Courtney, any other specifics you wanted to mention?
Those were the few that I wanted to raise with you here today. I mean, we could talk all night about all the bills out there, but I'll share the tracker with you all. And you can feel free to ask questions about, about what you see. And I'll continue sending updates and they'll get more interesting as things, you know, move forward in session.
Great, thank you. Okay, next up, our, next up on our agenda, school reopening. And I just, I wanted to keep this on there in case there is anything, although I don't, I don't have anything specific. Again, this is not a conversation about reopening generally, but more a conversation about whether there are any intergovernmental issues around reopening. You know, vaccines was an issue, but it seems like that has, and is moving forward. I know continue to be some hiccups in supply, but good news today, right? The President said we got another 200 million doses and so, so yay. And then I know testing has been another issue that obviously we're relying on both the state and the county. And I don't know if anybody on this call has an update on testing, but, but you know, my understanding was that is something that the state has been talking to districts about. I may just put it back to you Courtney, are there any other issues around reopening, or any other staff for that matter, that have an intergovernmental component that we might be able to assist with?
Um, I'm not sure, I asked Danny to join just in case she had anything to add here. But I, we've been, just so you know, we've been updating our elected official staff. Our elected officials can't always make it, they're obviously busy like you all. But we've been briefing our elected officials' offices about our reopening plans when we have announcements. So we briefed them earlier this week about our hybrid planning. So that's been really good, people are really happy to be included and just know more. This is a hot topic, no matter where you work and where you sit. So it's, I think, been met with a lot of appreciation that, you know, they can be updated on as things move along. So we'll continue to do that because we need to be transparent with our community, it's important. And a lot of them are also parents, so they want to know. And, and not, you know, not hearing much more than that, it's more appreciation with a few questions, not as much pushback or, you know, discontent, at least from where I sit. On the testing front, I don't have an update, but I'm happy to get more information. Obviously, that's something that's, you know, included in our SSL guidance. And it sounds like there's resources and we're not, we're not necessarily paying for that, which is also positive. I also learned, what else, I learned something else about.
Hey Courtney, I have a question while you're looking, we haven't gotten a lot of detail on childcare plans with reopening, but are we working with the county on that?
That would be a great Danny question. And, and I also did get that question from a legislator, that's like one of the only questions I got. So it's definitely been on my mind. So yeah, Danny, if you have anything to add on that front, that'd be great.
Sure, so, so directly with childcare, Nancy Hoth and Emily Glasgow are working on childcare plans, not only through hybrid, but into, into summer. And then myself and Sean Bird, who's our Chief of Schools, have been working with our partners at Multnomah County who manage the SUN service system. So if you think about SUN, not only as the extended learning and the extended care opportunities after school, but also our P3 coordination, some of the student advocacy work that they do, as well as some of the connections to anti-poverty efforts, like connections to rent assistance and energy assistance and general case management. So throughout the closure, the SUN service system has basically suspended in-person operations and asked partners to, to transition into online case management and resource and referral, in which case they have been servicing so many families. As you can imagine, we hear quite a bit of feedback from our partners that the need is extremely great out there. So to date, we have been working with the SUN service system and Oregon Food Bank to stand up several food pantries across our different schools. And just as of yesterday, we extended their current Cub licenses, which is the way that we sort of are tracking and also ensuring that our partners are following safety plans. We extended those until the current operations until the end of the third quarter, at which case we'll, we'll sort of like come back. So we wanted to make sure that principals and students and families had that sort of continuity of service and expectation around access to some of those basic needs and food through the food pantries. At the same time, Multnomah County during the, during, during the pandemic and during sort of distance learning, sort of, I want to say squired, but that's not the right word, hosted a report from Ed Northwest to talk about what's the best sort of models for online and hybrid and sort of eventual return to in-person services through the SUN system. And we're currently working with the partners to develop kind of like what would be a plan for eventual return. And so we're, we're expecting to hear some, some more of their thoughts and sort of like what's been going into that. And we'll continue to sort of work not only with Multnomah County, but with our partners in developing what is that sort of phased in approach to services. As you know, our vaccination eligibility extends to our, our partners and certainly our SUN service providers are part of that. So we've heard a lot of feedback from our partners who have been really excited about the opportunity to be included in there. And certainly they have staff who are taking, taking, you know, sort of taking part in that access. And we also have a lot of providers, as you know, that are continuing to have to do some more education and some competence building around the vaccine. And frankly, you know, are having a lot of the same conversations that we're having around, around safety, around sort of like, you know, getting their folks confident about returning to in-person services. So more to come, we'll keep you up to date on that. But we are sort of actively working on that with Multnomah County and our service providers.
Can I go back to testing? I, I am, I admit to being a little shocked that the protocol, more than a year in, is that only symptomatic people are going to get tested. I mean, that's wrong-headed on so many levels. So my question is, why? Are we still having capacity issues? Is it, I mean, what's the problem? Is the problem the lack of tests? Is it the lack of processing facilities? What, what are we doing?
So I'm going to assume that's rhetorical unless Courtney wants to.
I, I don't have an answer Director Scott, but I, but I'm happy to reach out to ODE, sorry, they're working with OHA on this.
That, that was not intended to be rhetorical and I don't expect it would have it, but if you, if
I can, I can find out.
Get the answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be, sorry, I was going to say it'd be great to hear back from ODE. Rita, I will say, you know, we had a meeting a week and a half ago with, with, with a public health doctor, Dr. Veneh Prasad, that, you know, has done a lot of work in the space. He actually, and so I'm, I'm, one, I want to recognize I am way outside my lane here, so I'm simply repeating something, not advocating for it. You know, he, he actually did make the argument that, that while, while random testing could be interesting, he didn't think it would be that helpful from a public health perspective. That, you know, it potentially could tell you where hotspots are, but, but school districts that have done that, it hasn't driven a whole lot. And that, you know, testing of symptomatic people from, from sort of a cost benefit perspective might actually be the right approach moving forward. So I put that out there, not as the definitive, but just as at least one perspective that may be similar to what ODE. So I think it's a good question to ask, you know, in, in terms of what the cost benefits are and why we're going down this road.
I'll report back.
Great, let's move on to broadband. Rita, do you want to introduce this, or do you want staff to talk about it?
Either which. I, I, I am, I don't have a particular expertise in this. I am passing along information that I have received. I, I've been in some communication with the municipal broadband folks. I will not claim any expertise in this or even any, any particular knowledge about the status of the discussions. But, so I'm looking at the board book. I also sent along the feasibility study that was completed for Multnomah County. And it's, it's not posted on the board book, but anybody who is interested, it's very long, it's over 200 pages, I think. But it, the county is now in the process of determining whether they want to continue to explore the feasibility of establishing a municipal broadband network. It would be a fiber optic network throughout the county. And the, the ask from the municipal broadband folks is that interested stakeholders, PPS being one, send a letter of support to the county regarding the establishment of a project manager position at the county level to manage the exploration of this issue. That's basically all I know.
And so that, that is the ask though, is, is, is PPS, is the, is the board willing to send a letter to Multnomah County saying, we support the, the funding of a project manager position to continue looking at the issue of broadband?
Yes.
It's no, it's no, no more than that in terms of like, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. One thing that is maybe interesting, so I have to admit, I did not read the whole 200-plus page feasibility study. I did read sections of it and a lot of it is around what would it, what would it cost to build? And what kind of monthly premium would subscribers have to pay in order to make it fiscally feasible? And there's all kinds of, all kinds of data in there. One of the notable things is that the, it's not cheap. I mean, this would not be a cheap proposition. But the, a huge chunk of the cost would be in Portland. The rest of the county, it would be, you know, the per mile cost of creating this network is pretty small compared to the per mile cost of building this network within the Portland city limits. So I think, anyway, I just note that. And, and if you want, I, I do have a rant queued up for why this is important. I will spare you unless you really want to hear it, but I got one, so.
Rita, not, not necessarily now, but I am interested in hearing about this more. And it, and it seems you, you do have a rant queued up. So, I'm interested.
Julia, did you have a comment?
I was just going to ask, and maybe this has been already covered, but my recollection is, and maybe you can explain how this is different, didn't the city of Portland do this? And invest a whole bunch of money and resources into it and then spend a whole bunch of money and resources sort of unwinding? I'm recalling the little things on the top of the I'm recalling the little things on the top of the downtown. They had these pods that, Andrew, you're laughing, but like, what, what is that different from?
I, I, people are going to think that that was a setup question. It wasn't. It was a spontaneous question. Yes, two different things actually. So City of Portland did set up a wifi system, so it's not, it's not high speed broadband. Did set up with those, those pods that around the city, trying to sort of bring hotspots essentially to different areas of the city. And, and then, and then they did end up unwinding that. It was not feasible. Also, the city spent time, less, fewer resources, although not, you know, I mean, not insignificant, but time in the mid 2000s researching the issue of municipal broadband. And actually there was some, and I, I'm, I'm going off of some very old memories here. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'll try not to delve into the details because I'm sure I'll get them wrong. But, but, but the recollection was, I mean, there were definitely different task forces and work groups and, you know, pulling together different coalitions and, and getting to the point of, of there was a plan. And I don't know if Multnomah County's sort of plan, I, I'm assuming, I hope that they sort of took that and, 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 you know, built on it. You know, Rita says it's expensive. My recollection is it is wildly expensive. And that was really the ultimate barrier was just that it's, it's, it's a huge upfront cost. And, you know, and then, and then sort of, sort of, you know, the question becomes, you know, how, how low can you get those rates to, to make it feasible? And are they low enough? Because really what you're trying to do is, is, is outcompete the, the, the private sector. I mean, to be really blunt about it, right? Is that the private sector is not bringing broadband uniformly or equitably to our region. And so, you know, the, the question is, is there a role for government to step in and do so? Because has broadband become like the mail or electricity or natural gas? That it is, it is a, it is a natural monopoly of sorts and the government needs to step in and regulate in, in some way. And I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to stop there. I, I am fully supportive of the idea of continuing to explore this. I think that is something that government should do. And if Multnomah County is taking that on, it feels like a pretty low cost ask of us to say, yes, Multnomah County, hire a project manager and report back to us when that person has done more exploration. I think the question of, of, you know, whether it's a good idea overall is, we can, we can put that off for at least a year or two as they go through this exploration. Because there are significant benefits and, and significant costs in my recollection.
Thank you. I knew you might know something about it.
And, and Don Wolf is on, on here as well. I'm not trying to put him on the spot, but I just wanted to include him in case any questions about sort of the overall merits of, of this were contemplated. So I don't know, Don, if you have anything to add.
I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. I will dive in a little bit deeper on what phase two looks like because I meet with the interim CIO from Multnomah County and on the CIO from, from Portland, from the city of Portland on, on a monthly basis. And this topic just came up in this, this Tuesday's, Monday's meeting that we had. And there is a community connectivity partner, partners that has been established to, in light of the feasibility study coming out and knowing that there is still a need, pulling together partners from all of the city and in, in Multnomah County and other interested parties. So I've been in, you know, asked if I'm interested in if PPS would like a table or seat at that table to discuss a whole number of, of items on where are, what's, what's the gap analysis? What do we still need? How can we start poking away at some of this stuff to potentially address some of the issues of a that, that are brought up in the feasibility study? So there is going to be continued work to go on around this topic. But it is a pretty significant bill and a pretty significant, when you read through the feasibility study, of gaps that would have to be addressed. Having as many properties as we do and knowing that we're running fiber between all those, those buildings is, and with all of the public entities involved, it, it creates for us some synergy if we can find some ways to work together and share some of those resources to be able to lend towards a broader answer to this, to this problem for all of our community.
And I think just to steal something that I'm sure is in Rita's rant. I mean, this is hugely important to our families and, and that has been so highlighted by COVID and the need to switch to distance learning and, and that, that digital divide and digital gap is, 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 is large. And I mean, may, maybe even one of the most impactful things. And, and obviously for our students, but it's true for our students' families as well. So, so there is a huge, there's a huge upside when we're thinking about the people we're serving.
Can I, I'm going to try and keep it from a rant, but let me just give an example, my house. I'm not in St. John's, but I'm near St. John's. I personally have a Comcast account. I pay a large sum of money every month to get internet access. Because it was so unstable, PPS gave me a Verizon hotspot. So I have two points of access to the internet. Both of them are unreliable. It is a very rare meeting where I don't have some kind of significant issue with unstable internet. And all the, I mean, you've seen it in action. So this, this is not something that individual families, even if they have the resources to pay for internet access, even with that, you can't solve this because this is, this is a, a, a community infrastructure issue. And the providers have failed to invest in infrastructure in certain neighborhoods. And we all know which neighborhoods those are. There you go.
What's the timing on this letter? Do we know? Is, have we been asked to submit by a certain time or?
There's no deadline. The county is, you know, like, like us, the county is in the middle of building its budget. So sooner rather than later. I don't, I mean, the county, county budget is very, very tight. I think they're probably looking at another year of cuts. I don't know how far down on the to-do list this might be. So the sooner, if we want to weigh in, sooner is better than later.
Is there any concern about sending a letter in support from committee members or staff?
There's no financial, it's just a letter, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seems like a reasonable thing to do.
I, I think, I think so as well. What is our process? Is this something that needs to go to the full board? Or can the intergovernmental committee, someone walk me through the process?
I think, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if we want to send a letter in the name of the full board, we have to have a full board vote. There are ways to do it where we don't have to wait for the next board meeting, which is in.
I, Director Moore, I don't know if that's accurate. There, we have sent board letters from the board on the I five project before without a vote.
Yeah, my recollection is basically the committee recommended Courtney, or somebody drafts it. It gets circulated to the, to the board with a, here's the letter that the intergovernmental committee recommends sending. Does anybody have any objection? Contact Courtney.
Okay. That would be, if we can do that, that would be better, I think.
Presumably then everyone sort of decides whether they are signing the letter. Is that kind of what it sounds like?
Yep. Well, then it, it's actually something like that would just go from, like, it would just say the Board of Education or.
Okay.
And could, could the, the student representatives sign onto that or would that be out of place?
That seems totally appropriate. I mean, it's not, it's not like a, a vote. It's a notification of support.
Okay. Yeah. Great. Good, well, let's, let's, let's do a motion then. Do I have a motion to recommend sending a letter on, in support of further studying of a project manager to further explore municipal broadband?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Then I guess the committee will take a vote. All those in favor, I guess there are three of us that get a vote, right? In favor say yes.
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 Any opposed or any abstentions? Great. Okay. And then Parker, let us know if that's something that you and the student committee would like to, to add your name to as well. And we will get something circulated. Just to save Courtney time, is there a, a letter template that came along with this? A letter of support template or no?
I, I didn't get that. I can contact the guy who contacted me and see if they've got something.
If it's helpful to save time, you could copy me on that email and I can, you know, be in the loop.
Great. Good.
And, and once, uh, once there's a final draft, you could send it to, to Nathaniel or to myself and I can circulate that to the other, either the whole DSC or, or the rest of the student representatives to the intergovernmental committee.
Okay. Rita, thanks for bringing that forward. Appreciate that. Uh, any other business for this committee before we adjourn for the night? Okay. Thanks Courtney, thanks Cassie, and thanks everyone.
Thanks everybody.
It's safe and warm. Play in the snow.